Let's begin. The first opening statement, Ms. Laura Clancy.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for having us all here tonight. I'm Laura Clancy, and I'm running for my third term on the Worcester School Committee. Just a little background, I hold a bachelor's degree in early childhood and psychology from Worcester State University, and I earned a master's degree in educational psychology from American International College. I am a proud Worcester Public School parent with two daughters in the district, Addison, who is a junior at Doherty, and Tegan, who is in first grade at Nelson Place. I'm very active in this community. I coach softball. I have been a member of the board on Joe Schwartz Little League. I am also a past and current president of the PTO at Nelson Place Elementary School. I am also an educator. I'm a licensed guidance counselor and have worked for over seventeen years working with youth involved in the juvenile justice department. My time on school committee started in January of 2020. Seventy-two days later, we closed the schools down. We worked tirelessly during that time to make sure our students' needs were being met. Never once was I able to use the excuse, "I'm new to this, I don't know." I had to know. There are three of us, including the mayor, who were still on the school committee from then, and no one can take away the incredible work that we did during that time that no one has ever been faced with. Since getting back to school, our students and staff back to school safely, we've been able to focus on the impact of the pandemic while reaching one of my top priorities, which is to provide a top-notch education for our students. Throughout the four years, we hired a new superintendent who has been great for our schools. We've made significant improvements on communication, in-house transportation, which is a vote I'm very proud to have taken. And I also chair Governance and Employee Issues Subcommittee, and along with Member Novick, we've undertaken, a huge undertaking of updating our outdated policies. I have the experience and look forward to continuing the work on the Worcester School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Tracy O'Connell-Novick.
Thank you. And, like Laura, I want to thank you all for putting this together and for hosting. I know it's a lot of work. My name is Tracy O'Connell-Novick, and I'm currently in my fifth term on the Worcester School Committee. I'm the mother of three children, two of whom are Worcester Public School alums. One, the youngest, is in their senior year at Burncoat High School in the dual-language program, which they've been in since kindergarten. I'm a former high school and English public school teacher in Massachusetts. I hold a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Boston University School of Education, and I now work in education finance and education policy. I, among other things, hold a license in school business administration from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I am really proud of the work that we have done this term, and I've run for reelection before, and I don't remember a year in which I was really quite so proud in all that had happened. Certainly, the work of bringing in a superintendent, we did a comprehensive national search, which is something that Worcester very much needed and that we are very, very proud of, both in terms of actually accomplishing the search, but also in terms of the results that we've seen from the superintendent. And really, we're moving ahead together as a governance team, which is part of the job of the school committee. We did, as Laura mentioned, implement district-operated transportation, something which is being both state and federally recognized by our peers across the country. And really, I will say that as a parent, which is really where the proof is in the pudding, there's no change, there's nothing quite like knowing that the bus is going to turn up when you know that the bus is going to. We successfully advocated at the state level for an increase in state's facility funding. We are finally coordinating with the city on that, and we're in our third year of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, which is something that I was very, very active in the multi-decade fight in order to both get, recognize, and actually finally get funded. I'm reflecting, as I look at the accountability system results that came out this past week, that I've never been quite so hopeful that we're already in good chance to do that. Looking forward to continuing the work for another term.
Ms. Sue Mailman.
I learned this from Gemma. My name is Sue Mailman. I'm sixty-one years old, and I've worked in my family business for thirty-eight years. I went to work full-time as a bank teller upon my high school graduation. I attended college nights over many years at QuinSig Worcester State in Assumption. I applied for an executive MBA at Northeastern and received my MBA at the age of thirty-nine. I'm married, have a total of six terrific stepchildren, including my youngest one tonight is here. My son Jeff was born in nineteen eighty-six. He graduated from Burncoat, and he died tragically in two thousand and seven at the age of twenty-one. A life-altering experience for any parent, and certainly for me as well. No doubt, that loss has shaped me and increases my sense of urgency about improving our little corner of the world here in Worcester. I've been privileged to work on many boards and committees that directly relate to education and workforce development. I was general chair of advisory at Worcester Tech for twelve years. I chaired the board at QuinSig for seven years. I've served on both the statewide and local workforce boards, and I've chaired the board of the Chamber of Commerce. At the heart of all these experiences was the knowledge that our K-12 public school system needs to be the very best it can be to offer our students the greatest opportunities. They deserve these opportunities. Some of the non-business-related boards, like the YW, Community Legal Aid, and United Way, have informed me my strong views that equity and social and emotional health and robust community partnerships are required to provide our students the very best of a rounded education. Lastly, as an employer, I know that the people in our public schools are our next generation of skilled tradespeople, estimators, project managers, and truck drivers, vital members of our community. Let's get to work and make sure WPS offers a rounded, safe, robust education.
Ms. Maureen Benanda.
The school committee formulates policy, oversees budget, hires and evaluates the superintendent, while remaining responsive to the local community. I possess a comprehensive understanding of these responsibilities, having served myself as an educator, administrator, and superintendent while working with multiple school committees successfully. With a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary and Special Ed, a Master's in Education from Pittsburgh, and Harvard Graduate School of Education in Administration Planning and Social Policy, my academic background is solid. Currently serving as the interim superintendent of the Eastham School District after holding the same position in the Quaybog Regional School District during the twenty-two-twenty-three school year, I am well-versed in educational leadership. My forty-six years of experience working in the Worcester Public Schools is a testament to my commitment. I have prioritized student safety, spearheaded numerous initiatives such as the Early College Program, Chapter Seventy-four programs, and the expansion of the dual-language program. My collaboration with local and state agencies, healthcare professionals, and city and state government during the pandemic ensured the safety and accessibility of education for our students, families, and staff. I initiated measures like waiting rooms with CNA staff, testing protocols, supply disbursement in numerous multilingual webinars for families. My thirty-eight-year tenure at South High Community School, where I served as teacher, assistant principal, and principal, equipped me with hands-on experience in fostering a positive learning environment, implementing discipline processes, and pioneer initiatives. My comprehensive background spans forty-five years, from educator to administrator.
These questions are for all candidates. This upcoming school committee will set the precedent for the roles of an at-large and district school committee member. What do you see as your role? What will be your first item of business? Laura Clancy.
Thank you. So as we know, obviously, the district is changing, and I still see that my top priority, which has been one of my top priorities since I started, was enhancing school safety. This year, we've done a study on school safety in the schools, and I'm looking forward to that report in November coming out. We've been looking at extensively working along with my colleagues. We have new positions in the schools, and to enhance those positions around school safety, our deans, our climate and culture, and these are positions that we approved, and the pilots were successful last year. We've added more and continuing to work with these departments and support their work. Thank you.
Maureen Benanda.
First of all, with district and also at-large candidates, I would work so that we are able to have good communication, so that we would be talking about what are the needs of the whole district, as well as the individual needs of schools. My first policy that I would work on is improve school safety. Also, secondly, to really further develop academic access and equity, look at budget accountability, and then working on strengthening school-community partnerships.
Tracy O'Connell-Novick.
Thank you. So first, I think that is really the main reason that I'm running, which is that the good work of the administration and the school committee that has just started really needs to get underway. We're in the middle of revising the strategic plan. I know I don't need to tell you that, Dr. Carey, but that will actually then be moving forward into implementation, and that takes the work of the school committee. We also, obviously, are looking at the third, and then the fourth, and then the fifth year of Student Opportunity Act spending. As was noted, we have a overdue look at the school safety of the district, which hadn't been done for quite some time. We are looking at the multilingual program, which also hadn't had a comprehensive look in some time, and, of course, the ongoing work in facilities, which takes work both at the state and the federal level, as well as cooperation with the city.
Sue Mailman.
I think of the at-large and district positions as different than council. You know, I think of council as having, they're representing the businesses and the residents of that district, but in the school side, we're going to be representing the residents, period. You're going to be looking out for the schools in your district, for sure, but you're going to have people in your district that live in, that are going to school in other places. So it's not the same job as it is on the city side, and I think there, you know, we'll be looking forward to more description about that, and we're fortunate to have Tracy Novick on the board, who will make sure that we have MASC's rules in front of us. I am, I can't tell you what my first item of business, should I be re-elected in January, that we're going to be informed about a lot of different things, and that will inform my first item. Thank you.
This question has to do with buildings. The first responder will be Sue Mailman. Worcester Public School manages sixty-two public facilities, with only a handful being built or substantially renovated in the last fifteen years. As the buildings age, needs continue to increase, but so do construction costs. How should WPS identify, plan for, prioritize, and fund the next wave of projects? You have one minute.
One minute to answer a question that is a hundred years old or plus. I think that our district is, almost everybody, I'm going to bet you on this stage or whatever we're at, is going to say that school buildings are a priority, and I am included in that group. I think that we, we don't have any great solutions yet. We have Student Opportunity Act money that's going to support the programs, the teachers, the students, but those aren't giving us building funds. So we are going to have to look statewide, we're going to have to look nationally, we're going to have to look at grants, we've got to prioritize which buildings need to happen first. Burncoat should, needs to get done. I'd advocate for a fifty-fifty vocational school and a art school, and then hopefully the state will be funding at ninety percent reimbursement if we have more than a ten percent vocational component. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Clancy, you have thirty seconds, please.
Okay, I'll be quick. Keeping up with our master, our facilities master plan, which is a live and working document, it's a couple of years old, but it is a live document, and that we keep up with that. And expanding the roles within that department, we need to make sure that we're seeking state and federal grants to offset some costs. And we do get quarterly updates at our FNO, which I think have been incredibly important. Another thing to look at is that our administration has set the bar this year for turnaround time on our work orders in our school, and I think that is an aggressive goal, but I think we're going to see some incredible impacts from that goal.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell-Novick, please.
To build on what's already been said, part of what we've done with the Student Opportunity Act Fund is that we've been building and increases the operational budget, but that's only part of the answer. We're going to need to have a statewide conversation, parallel to SOA, because the cities have more buildings, and they also have less money. And so we're in the same boat as New Bedford and Fall River and lots of other places. But I also would argue that this is partly a federal issue, that the federal government finally has an idea of the needs of schools due to the pandemic, and they also need to put some money behind that.
Thank you. Maureen Benanda.
I think it's important to state that the Worcester Public Schools does have a capital plan. It was written many years ago. I was part of that conversation with the city manager regarding the capital plan. It's a list of the buildings and what needs to be fixed in all the schools, and it is a priority. I was happy to see that in the budget this year, there is fourteen million dollars that is put in for doing some of the work in the schools. Ten thousand two hundred thirty-four came from the...
Thank you. Sue Mailman, thirty seconds for rebuttal.
My only rebuttal is that plans that were drawn up even five years ago or ten years ago need to be revisited. It's a whole new crew, it's a whole new day, and we are doing that work right now.
Third question has to do with the strategic plan. The Worcester Public Schools is engaging in an update to its strategic plan. What are your priorities for the update, and how do you plan to measure its implementation? The first responder is Laura Clancy. You have a minute. I knew I would get this one. We're in the process of updating our strategic plan, and the committee that I chair oversees the work of the administration prior to it going back to full school committee, so I'm actually proud of the work that we're doing. Some of my priorities will be to maintain our one-to-one technology through the district and improving our academic scores, especially in reading and in turnaround, that will provide the high-quality educational opportunities for our students. How we measure these goals is that we align these goals of the strategic plan with what we do yearly with the superintendent's evaluations. We update her, we evaluate her goals every year, and that way we will be update, we will get an idea of how the strategic plan is going, and we will also be asking for updates on the strategic plan as we move forward. But the work is being done, and I'm actually proud of the hard work that we're doing behind this. Thank you. Tracy O'Connell-Novick, you have thirty seconds.
So I mean, part of the point of having the community do the strategic plan is that the school committee isn't setting the priorities. What we set out was the feedback that the superintendent got from there, from her listening and learning tour. We took that, we took the strategic plan that we're updating, and we sent that to community groups. So I think that's important. The administration is actually going to come back with measurable outcomes for us, and then, as Laura noted, that will be tied into our annual evaluation of the superintendent, which is the way that these things are supposed to actually work. That was something we kind of lacked last time, where we didn't really tie it into anything else, and that won't happen this time.
Maureen Benanda, you have thirty seconds.
So I've been involved with the last two strategic plans, the one before as a community member, and very involved with the last strategic plan. I think it was a great strategic plan at the time. I think some of the priorities have shifted since then, and I do think that there should be a focus on budgetary in this plan, how we're going to achieve all the things, and how it's going to be paid for.
Sue Mailman, you have thirty seconds.
As part of the last strategic plan, as a community person, I don't believe we'd had a strategic plan done in many years before that, and the community pushed for that strategic plan because we didn't have buy-in from leadership at the time to move forward with the plan. So what I see differently this time is a very engaged group of educators. I saw photographs from the sessions today, and I am excited, and I think that everybody's on board to put forth a good process.
Thank you. Laura Clancy, thirty seconds.
Yes, thank you. So just as some of my colleagues had said, we're looking at the strategic plan, the priorities are going to be set by the administration, we're going to tie them in with the superintendent's goals, so we will know exactly how the strategic plan is going. Unlike, that was noted, in the past, we didn't really get clear updates from the strategic plan, so I'm excited to see that we're actually moving in a clear direction this time.
Thank you. Question four is regarding technology. Worcester Public Schools has purchased Chromebooks for every student in the district. However, maintaining these investments will be critical as the computers age or break. How will you ensure that these technology innovations continue and receive adequate funding and support? How else should Worcester Public Schools integrate technology into the classroom? Tracy O'Connell-Novick, one minute.
Well, the first thing is that you've got to have a plan, and luckily, we do. My, the Standing Committee that I chair, Finance and Operations, actually had a tech, a tech plan that we reviewed that went to the school committee that was approved, that actually looks out over more than a decade in terms of Chromebooks and also the laptops that the teachers using aging out and having a replacement plan. We actually not only have that, we also have a budgetary plan, but of course, part of the proof is going to be in the pudding, so we need to make sure that we continue to fund the technology replacement cycle. Also, ongoing upgrades of Wi-Fi, maintenance, and so forth. I had an item that I filed this past week that we'll be having a report on IT in one of the upcoming meetings, just to make sure that we've got our eye on the ball in terms of our budgetary responsibilities. We also, though, need to make sure that we continue to look at our policies, and that means things like access. And also, as I'm sure one of my colleagues will probably mention, because I'm going to run out of time, the Spark Academy is intended to actually look exactly at this kind of thing.
Maureen Benanda, thirty seconds.
So some of the Chromebooks that we purchased were also on leases, so that you, you know, return them and you're able to purchase additional Chromebooks with that. So I would say that we continue to do that, that type of way of financing them, and also look for grants, and of course, funding through the SOA.
Sue Mailman, thirty seconds.
I was at another board meeting this morning, and the conversation was around AI and technology, and the discussion was that what we are going to see in technology in the next five years is beyond what we've seen in the last thirty years. And it's, so all of the questions that we're sitting here thinking about today, I wonder if they, I wonder if three years from now, we're going to be asking those exact same questions. Is it going to be about the Chromebooks or some other device that we don't know about? I think we have to stay ahead of the game, and we have, and we have a superintendent that's very interested in this work.
Laura Clancy, thirty seconds.
Again, I will advocate for continuous investment in our technology and the integration of technology into our curriculum. Integrating technology across all grades is essential for preparing our students for, like Sue had just mentioned, for the world that we don't even know about yet. So we just need to make sure that we're getting, we're planning, and we're getting updates from administration so that we can make sure that we're budgeting and that we're getting curriculum in our buildings to get our students ready for a world that is up in the unknown at this point.
Tracy O'Connell-Novick, thirty seconds for rebuttal.
I will say that one thing, this isn't really a rebuttal, I will say that one thing that I found really, really reassuring about our administration is that they're not afraid of technology. I see a lot of administrators, unfortunately, across the state and the country, that seem to have decided that the main way to deal with technology is to try to lock it out as much as possible, and that's not really doing our job of preparing students for the workforce, for education, for anything else. We have a responsibility to make sure that our kids are ready to go be grown-ups, and we do that apart by making sure that they're ready for technology.
Question number five is on school safety. Worcester Public Schools has engaged in a safety audit, which will provide a comprehensive review of safety plans and policies. Do you support current school safety strategy? What would you like to see from the safety audit? Maureen Benanda, you have one minute.
So I have a lot of experience with safety, having been a administrator for thirty-eight years, or in the high school for thirty-eight years, an administrator, twelve years assistant, eight as principal, as well as superintendent of schools. I feel as though the most important thing is that schools are safe. Everybody deserves to go to schools in a safe place. Students cannot learn unless they do feel safety. Do I think that the current policy of the Worcester Public Schools provides safety for all? I think that, for the most part, yes, but I believe that there are some more things that we need to do to provide safety for all the students in the Worcester Public Schools.
Sue Mailman, thirty seconds, please.
Thank you. You know, the audit of our buildings that was mentioned, has been mentioned several times already, so we'll start there, because as we talk about the age of our buildings and the shape of our facilities, certainly, we will have, we will have building safety issues that are going to be addressed with this current audit, so that's an important item before us. I also think that I am very much in favor of the, of the process that we're taking now, and five seconds, and that the climate officers, the different approach to making...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Clancy, thirty seconds.
Thank you. Again, what we're saying, so the safety audit, and I want to make sure that we, once we get that audit back, and I'm not afraid to see where our inadequacies are, so that we address them, and that we make sure that we're doing a good job to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for our students. We're going to make sure that if there's policies that we need to change, if there's budgetary items that we need to look into, so I think the safety audit is going to be very important for us, so we can make some serious changes.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell-Novick, please.
I always think that as a parent, there's really no stronger statement you can make about your belief in the safety of buildings than sending your kid out to a school bus every morning, and that's what I've been doing for seventeen years. I will say that as an educator, one thing that I found really frustrating about conversations that we've had about school safety in the past, and not just here, but other places, has been how singular faceted it is. We seem to talk about school shootings and that kind of thing a lot. We don't talk about how it feels to be an LGBTQIA student, or how it feels to be a Black student, or so, something like that. And that matters, too. That's part of being safe, and that works badly being done.
Maureen Benanda, you have a thirty-second rebuttal, please.
So I think good citizenship in schools is based on respect and consideration for the right of others. Students really should be expected to conduct themselves in a way that the rights and privileges of others are not violated. They should be expected to acknowledge, respect constituted authority, and conform to the school rules into those provisions of law that apply to their conduct. And I think we have to develop policy around that so that everybody goes to school in a place that is safe, in where they feel comfortable.
Thank you.
Question six is regarding early education. Early education is the foundation for future success. What role should the school system play in strengthening and expanding current preschool programs and other affordable early childhood education opportunities? Tracy O'Connell-Novick, you have one minute.
Well, we're finally getting there. I think that the Student Opportunity Act is actually, I know we keep saying that, but it's a big deal, it's a hundred million dollars over six years. That is one of the steps forward, because one of the, one of the things about early childhood is you sort of have to expand before you get the money, because the enrollment follows the following year. But we know that parents have been frustrated for a long time, in particular, among other things, about half-day programs. I did that myself. You know, sooner dropped them off than you had to go get them again. We are seeing that expansion, we're seeing it across the city, and I will also say that the ongoing collaboration that we have with early childhood providers across the city is also something that's important. One thing we know we had a weakness of more comprehensively was working with the community in all kinds of ways, and that's one of the ways where we really can't let it slip, because most of the kids who are in early childhood programs in Worcester somewhere are going to end up being our kindergartners, and we need to make sure that we're paying attention to those relationships as well.
Thank you. Maureen Benanda, you have thirty seconds.
I love this question. First of all, while I was at South High School, I was involved with the setup of the Teen Parent Program, which talks about not only our preschoolers, but our children that I actually have, have children, and how we help them prepare to be good parents. I also was involved with expanding the preschool programs at South High School and the building of the preschool section in the new South High School. So I really think that we need to continue to expand preschool programs and in the SOA that we...
Thank you. Sue Mailman, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you. This question I, I want to take from the community side, because one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we get to a place where we have universal pre-K, that we are not destroying our current childcare providers, who, remember, are open 7:00 in the morning until 5:30 at night. As a parent that went to work early and worked till 5:00 o'clock, I needed those services. If the schools, so when we get to that pri, to universal pre-K, we got to make sure we are in heavy collaboration-
Thank you.
-with the community.
Thank you so much. Laura Clancy, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. And as a parent who had children in, in early childhood centers that barely could afford it, I have asked the, the previous administration to look into creating an early childhood center in, in the city of Worcester, in one of our underutilized buildings. Nothing happened with that. I do know that we've expanded our full-day preschool, which is very important. And I'm hoping that through this current administration, we can relook at opening up an early childhood center for all of our students. And our, our Head Start program is phenomenal, and the support of that has been incredible in this district.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novak, 30 seconds.
And speaking of Head Start, of course, they're one of the ones that are going to get hit if we have a federal government shutdown. So anything anyone can do to prevent that, that would be great. No, and I think this is one of the ways where we really need, we really are talking to families and we're really listening to families. But certainly when we had the listening sessions before we did Student Opportunity Act implementation, this came up. I know that it also has come up with Dr. Monares's listening sessions as well. And so, I mean, really, part of this is about what do our families need from us as a district, and how do we make sure that we're responding to that?
Thank you.
Question seven is on the superintendent evaluation. And all candidates will have one minute to respond. What measures will you use to determine whether the superintendent is performing adequately in carrying out the policies and legislative priorities of the school committee? Do you think the current superintendent is performing effectively? Maureen Benanda, one minute, please.
So I'll take the first part first. So I love the superintendent's rubric that is set by DESI, Massachusetts DESI. It evaluates superintendents. As I've been a superintendent, this is my third different evaluation based on three different districts, on instructional leadership, management operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Under each of those categories, there are also indicators. So this is the evaluation process that is recommended by DESI. It has just been updated, and I really do like it. As far as the evaluation of the work of the current superintendent, I don't feel that I have that, the information to be able to do that at, at this point. However, I will say that all new superintendents go to a, a three-year program called Mzip, and the reason why you go is because you're learning the job as you go.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novak, one minute, please.
Sure. So the state evaluation system is actually set by regulation. It's required of all school districts. It's something that I teach to school committees across the state, so we don't really have an option on that. We do vote the goals of the superintendent, and then the indicators that are under each of the standards, we actually are, we are told that we should be choosing among them to find ones that align with the goals. The school committee just recently voted the goals for the coming year for Dr. Monares. And I will say that this is the first school committee I've worked with where we had a full back-and-forth conversation, where she presented some things, and we gave some feedback, and she went back and had some more conversations, and she came back with something that we then worked on together. So we really are on the same page, which is refreshing, I would say. And also, we are getting reports over the course of the year that are tied back into their goals, which is how you're supposed to do this. And also makes the evaluation process that much more reasonable and thoughtful at the end of the year, rather than just being sort of a one-and-done. You've been having the conversation right along.
Thank you. Sue Mailman.
So as someone that became familiar with the process that the state uses during last year's evaluation, I had a lot of thoughts about how kind of rigid it is, and how set by the state it is, and there's not a lot of room for flexibility. But that is the state of Massachusetts. We are going to be measuring, the goals were set last week. Student achievement is part of the, what we're going to be measuring against. Recruitment, hiring, and retention of staff. I think the retention thing is a big deal. And then maintenance of school safety. I think Laura already talked about the 72-hour response time for, for making sure folks understand what's going to happen in their buildings. And lastly, grade three reading is one of the indicators that we're going to be using to measure Dr. Monares.
Thank you. Laura Clancy.
Thank you. So I'll actually first start by saying this, that I know the superintendent has done a good job. I'm in those schools every single day, whether it's in my capacity as a school committee member, as an educator that has worked alongside of the city. You can just see going into the school, the morale of our staff. You hear in the community. So I think she's doing a wonderful job. And as has been said by my colleagues, each year, we set the superintendent's goals along with the superintendent, and we evaluate those goals moving forward. We'll get a, a report midway through this year, and then we'll do her final evaluation at the end of the year. And that's how we set the goals, the develop, from the rubric system, developed by the state. Everyone said it. So, I mean, but basically, you know, we, we evaluate the superintendent every year. And, you know, I will say, it was refreshing. Last year, I felt like I did my first superintendent evaluation, and it was concrete, it was concise, and it was exactly what we were looking for.
Thank you.
Question number eight is regarding cell phones. There is a debate to restrict cellphone usage at schools on the state level. Worcester Public School allows for discretion by principals and teachers. However, the schools are reviewing their acceptable use for cell phones, earbuds, and other electronic devices. What policies would you support? Maureen Benanda, one minute.
Love that. I do not support that policy. That policy should not be voted in. First of all, they're not a learning tool, they're a distraction. And you can't find a teacher that won't tell you that that's disrupting, it's disrupting the learning in the classroom. If you want to, you got to call it a, a learning tool, then where's your equity? What about a kid that doesn't have a phone? We provide all other kinds of devices for kids. Those cell phones should be shut off. They should be put in their pocket and not allowed to be turned on. I can see during the lunchtime that allow students during their lunchtime to do it. But absolutely, during the school day, this is a place of learning. Teachers don't need to, every single day, stop what they're doing and tell somebody, take the earbuds out of your ears, shut off your TV, stop with the social media. It doesn't belong in school. We go to school to learn, and we don't need to have cell phones on.
Okay, thank you. Response one, Sue Mailman, 30 seconds.
That is a very definite answer. My answer is less definite than that. I believe that in our schools, we have principals that are trying new techniques, and they're trying to figure out what works, and what's going to be effective for the classroom and for their school. It does seem like we do, and we have asked for a citywide policy. So that's where we're going with this. But right now, I think what's great for us is if we could really evaluate what some of these principals are doing and what cream rises to the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Clancy.
Thank you. So I just want to say, the current policy that we do have was from previous administration. So I don't know, so just looking at that, and that's actually important, because we're taking a look at it now. We're going to see what's working. What's important about this current administration is that we have things in place. For example, we ask her to go back to our current leaders in the schools, get their opinion. She meets with the students, get their opinion, and then we'll formulate a policy based on what is best for our students and our staff in the Worcester Public Schools.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novak.
So I was the one who filed the reconsider of the cellphone policy, because as Laura mentioned, it's, it's from previous times and is really kind of vague and not implementable, if that's a word. But the other thing that comes to mind is, I'm a, I mean, I have a master's of arts in teaching. We did some history of education when I was getting my master's. And education does this every time. We did this with ballpoint pens. Like, whatever the new thing is, we can't, we can't handle it. And we got to learn from our own history for once, maybe, please.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay. Rebuttal from Maureen Benanda, 30 seconds.
First of all, phones are not like ballpoint pens. And second of all, the past administration was not asked what they thought about the cellphone policy before it was voted in. Thank you.
Question nine is regarding MCAS. Massachusetts is one of eight states that requires students to pass a standardized test to graduate from high school. Do you support the use of MCAS as a graduation metric? What other metrics would you use to measure academic progress? Sue Mailman, you have one minute.
Thank you. Well, we have a ballot question that looks like it might get, with enough signatures, we'll get on the ballot. So we'll see, we'll see what our voters think about that. Right now, there's, if I understand the numbers correctly, there's 700 students every year in Massachusetts that are not graduating because they didn't pass the MCAS. And that is after, you know, trien in 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. Having worked at Quinn Sig and served on the board there for, for seven years, I know that readiness for college and readiness for higher ed takes many forms. And I'm not sure that MCAS has to be the final state. I also know that MCAS does not have to be the final stake in order to get into an apprentice program, or to look at vocational-type programs. So I'm, again, on this one, willing to say, where does the state want to go? And I'd lean towards getting rid of the graduation, although I do like the MCAS. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Clancy, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. So I'm just going to speak from my experience of, as an educator. I have students who are in their 30s now, who have, only have their certificate of attainment, who do not have a high school diploma because they never passed the MCAS test. So it's disheartening to say that whether or not we should use it as a high school graduation requirement, I don't believe that we should. Do I believe that we need to have standards set? Do I think that we need to look at, possibly, is the MCAS still working in this state? That's something that I think we need to look at. But tying it into a high school graduation requirement, I don't agree with.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novak, you have 30 seconds.
And there's no way I can answer this question in 30 seconds. So, so there's, there's two things. And I'm not going to give you a straight answer, because it's more complicated than that. There's the competency determination, which is written into the Massachusetts General Law, which does not have to be the MCAS. That's been determined by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, which essentially is a, is a constitutional obligation. The state has to have some way of saying, yes, we're fulfilling our constitutional obligation. I have yet to hear the suggestion as to how the state does that.
Thank you. Maureen Benanda, you have 30 seconds.
So I'm, I'm so old that I was around way before they had MCAS, and I, and I was a teacher. So I can tell you that before MCAS and after, after MCAS, before MCAS, we were not meeting standards. So we necessarily don't have to have the MCAS, but we absolutely have to have one test that students have to pass to graduate, and it has to be the whole test, the same test through, through Massachusetts. Because employers need to know that people have certain skills when they hire them.
Thank you. Sue Mailman, you have 30 seconds.
I would just, I'm not sure that employers, knowing what skills will come from a test. I think it comes from lots of other stuff. But otherwise, I'll just let everybody's statement stand. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question 10 is regarding student outcomes. According to DESI data, only 24% of Worcester 9th graders go on to earn a career certification, associate's degree, or bachelor's degree by their mid-20s. What are your plans, if elected, to improve outcomes for our youth? Laura Clancy, you have one minute, please.
Thank you. So this is actually interesting, because it's, I, I think one thing that we're tying it into this year is, what we've seen is that our students need to be at a grade-level reading by 3rd grade. And that's a huge, it's one of the, it's the goal of the superintendent this year, and I think that it sets a precedent for the outcomes of our students in terms of graduation. We also need to make sure that we are holding high standards for all of our students. I'm not just talking at the comprehensive high schools. I'm talking about in our alternative schools also. I have worked with students who are close to graduating, that can't formulate sentences, that can't read. We know that they weren't ready for post-secondary, post-secondary education, career, whatever they're going into. We need to make sure that we are starting in early childhood, or our earlier grades, get these students ready for success, and then we'll see better outcomes when they get to the, to the middle school and the high school level. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novak, 30 seconds, please.
So you're citing a statistic that I haven't seen, because one thing that the state's struggled with is actually sort of figuring out where people go. We, I, so I would be interested in figuring out where that is, and I say that as someone who spends a lot of time on the state website. The, the, the ongoing, the ongoing question around long-term outcomes is actually part of what became part of the MCAS conversation at the Board of Ed last week, because sometimes there seems to be a tie. That's not advocating for the MCAS. That's saying that there are things you can tell earlier that then have later outcomes.
Thank you. Maureen Benanda, 30 seconds, please.
So as, as a high school principal, and also as superintendent, this has all, always been something that's been on my mind. So as superintendent, I began the early college programs, the Innovation Pathway programs, and expanded internships. The reason to provide experiences prior to graduation, so students would be successful upon graduating.
Thank you. Sue Mailman, 30 seconds, please.
I, I think that we're, you know, we see in a lot of, we've got to understand that this world is going to have different pathways. And pathways to community college or, and then four-year institutions are going to be, it's not a straight line. It goes all over the place. And I think the, the governor's decision to fund community college at age 25, I hope my youngest stepson is listening, is, is really something that can help pathways, because at 25, you're more ready than you are at 18.
Thank you. Laura Clancy, you have 30 seconds for a rebuttal.
Thank you. And I, I was actually, when, and Memenovek had, oh, I shouldn't refer to her, but Tracy had said it, like, I'm fascinated by that information, because we've been trying to get it for a very long time, that we haven't been able to get it. I stick to my original argument. We start with our early childhood. We get the students ready for success early, and then we'll see the success as they graduate from Worcester Public Schools.
Thank you.
Question 11 regards teacher retention. Teachers have been facing mounting pressures to combat learning loss and address the social and emotional needs of students. How do you think Worcester Public Schools can better support and retain teachers? Maureen Benanda, you have one minute.
Okay. I also have a lot of experience in this area for keeping teachers engaged in the work. So first of it, provide training for teachers, observe classrooms. If they, if you're seeing they're having difficulty, provide them mentoring, go back and observe again, work as a partner with them. No teacher should feel that they're out there on their own. You create a culture in your school where everybody understands that we're there for all students, and we're there to support, share the work that we do, have conversation with each other about it, and celebrate what we're doing right.
Response one from Sue Mailman, you have 30 seconds.
I, I think retention, and it's a big question across almost every industry right now. And I think for teaching, I think that the, a culture, I think people want to work for a system, not just one school, but a system that is going forward, a system that is taking us to the future. They want to believe that the people that are in charge are building a team around them. And I think when they, when they feel this view of the future-
Thank you.
-they stop.
Laura Clancy, 30 seconds.
Thank you. So I, I believe that we need to start with a positive school culture for all of our schools. Under this administration, we have seen actually, basically, no grievances have come to the school committee, which I can't say that we've had that in the past year. So that's been huge. We're really changing the culture of the schools. I will say, under this committee, we have given our educators the best contract that I've heard in over 20 years. And I think we're going to see huge outcomes in terms of retention moving forward, because we've given them a really good contract- forward, because we've given them a really good contract, and we know that they're incredibly happy right now.
Tracy O'Connell Novick.
So I would say three things, two which have already been said. One is certainly the contract. We know that there's been, you know, negotiations across the state and across the country that haven't had those kinds of positive outcomes. The second is the relationship with the union, which has been very deliberately built, which has had really positive outcomes. I see that particularly from the school committee. And thirdly, comprehensive support of schools across the district. We're not leaving schools sort of to their own devices to cope. We're actually making sure that they have the support that they need.
Maureen Benenda, 30 seconds.
So when I was superintendent, we used to get together for the first day of the school year to bring everybody together. And the point of that was that everybody here is part of a much bigger movement. And here we are all together, you know, many schools, 5,000 employees, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everyone that's involved in a school with the same goal, to provide what's best for every child in the Worcester Public Schools.
Question 12 has to do with SEL. Remote learning and the pandemic have increased students' social and emotional needs across grade levels. Worcester Public Schools has invested in wraparound coordinators and social emotional learning resources. How else should Worcester Public Schools respond to student needs? Tracy O'Connell Novick, you have one minute.
Well, the first thing we did was we acknowledged that they existed, which took some doing, because we had some battles royal about that coming out of the pandemic. And that hasn't been the issue anymore. Making sure that we actually have sufficient staff in the schools, but also partnering with community agencies, which is something that this district has been doing over the past year or so. Also, honestly, I, you mentioned the wraparound coordinators. I want to note that the wraparound coordinators actually then referring to resources in the community does include mental health supports. I've heard this firsthand, which is huge. We all know that it's difficult to find mental health supports in the community, and that's something that the schools are actually part of. Part of that is the climate and culture staff that we have in the schools, actually keeping attuned to how kids are doing. You know, we talk a lot as educators about every student needs to have at least one adult who they feel like is on their side. Sometimes that's on a teacher, sometimes that's somebody else. And more of those somebody-else's is really important for our kids.
Thank you. Maureen Ben, I'm so sorry. Maureen Benenda, we have, you have 30 seconds.
So I, I do think that SEL is important. However, it really should be integrated into what you're doing in the academics and in the curriculum. I think that we have, Worcester Public Schools did a great job. I was just looking at the new budget for 20 wraparounds, also five school psychologists, an increase of school adjustment counselors. So with that all in place, I think it's now time to really focus back on the academics, along with integrating SEL, the extra supports. But I think it's time now for us to move now back into looking at academics.
Thank you. Sue Mailman, you have 30 seconds.
I, I think one of the things we've learned, that it's not, it's not about academics or social and emotional, it's about both. And we are building a system that is going to support kids in different places where they're at, at different points of their education, with social and emotional learning tools. And so I don't see it as academic or social and emotional. I see it as both, all the time, every day in school. Thank you.
Laura Clancy, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I, I believe that we're creating a climate and culture in our schools, unlike that we have seen. Actually, the community agency item was to partner up with community agencies, to come into our school, to work with our, our students, to meet their clinical needs in conjunction with our staff. That was actually an item that I had brought to previous administration, and it's taken this administration to actually follow through with that. And I know that it's taken some time to get the ground running on that, just because of the lack of services in the community, but we're seeing some ground on that, and I think it's going to make a huge improvement for our students.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novick, 30 seconds.
The educator lingo-y way of saying this is that you can't do Maslow without doing Bloom, which means that you can't actually be teaching kids and expecting them to do the higher learning until you actually meet their basic needs. That's part of why we feed kids lunch. That's part of why we provide district transportation. That's part of why we, some of our schools have washing machines, and some of our schools provide clothing. And yes, that means that we actually have to be supporting our kids emotionally, making sure that their mental health is as stable as we can make it, and then they can learn.
Thank you.
Question 13 is also on social emotional learning. As a large urban center, Worcester is home to a diverse array of students and families from all backgrounds. Is Worcester Public Schools doing enough to serve the increasingly diverse student body, including English language learners, special education students, and others who need extra attention? Laura Clancy, you have one minute, please.
So I, I believe we are getting there. I think we need to look at our hiring practices to ensure that we have a staff that reflects our student body. We need to make sure that we are improving our services for our diverse student population, enhancing our initiatives for our L students, and looking at making sure that we have an inclusive curriculum, which has been something that we've worked for since I've been on the school committee, which has made a huge difference. We also need to look at additional resources for our special education students. Like I said, I think our top priority is to make sure that we're getting people in front of our students that reflect our student population. And I think that this administration has done an incredible job, like I said, with the support staff that we're adding to the buildings. We're seeing a huge difference in student morale in our schools.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novick, 30 seconds, please.
So the answer, I think, is we can always do more. The good news is we're only in year three of the Student Opportunity Act, and we have six. And the guidance and psychological services line is part of what was increasing as part of that. The first thing, though, is always acknowledging the student body that we have. And certainly, the summary of the Research Bureau's version of this question does that. But that does mean, as Laura mentioned, making sure we have a staff that's reflective of the student body, which is a goal of the superintendent for this year, making sure that we're actually thoughtful about that. And also, we've added family and community engagement directors, which I know are going to be key to this work.
Thank you. Maureen Benenda, 30 seconds, please.
So my experience, I've put washing machines in schools, started the first food pantry in Central Math, clothing provided, college tours, parent meetings at Y's and churches, babysitting, all those things that we do for our parents and our diverse population. Do I think that Worcester Public School does a great job? I absolutely think they have done a great job in the past, and they are still doing a great job. In all ways, I guess you can always look to do more.
Thank you. Sue Mailman, 30 seconds, please.
I think that I'm learning in my, you know, was I almost end the second year, that in some, in so many areas, really, we are, we have been behind the eight ball in a lot. Some of that has to do with funding, but also some of it has to do with leadership and structure and putting people in particular positions that may or may not have been there, and rethinking, may not have, should have been there, and rethinking how we are supporting the district needs.
Thank you.
Stop again.
Laura Clancy, you have 30 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you. And I'll, you know, I'll stick to the, to what I said in the beginning. I think we need to be intentional in our hiring to make sure that we have staff that reflects our student population. And I also think, which wasn't mentioned, is that we were making huge improvements to our chief equity office. And I think that's going to be a, we're going to start seeing some huge improvements in equity across the district with that improvement in that, in that office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question 14 concerns salaries. There is a proposal to increase school committee member salaries to the rate of Worcester City councilors. What is your position and why? Sue Mailman, you have one minute.
I hope you were going to ask me that question. Okay. My view is that in this city, we sometimes don't talk about the tough stuff in front of us. We don't look at the, our rules that impact us as elected people. This is an example of something like that. I didn't say that the school committee salary should be doubled. I said that, in my view, it should not be 50% of city council. So I bring that item forward. It's to go to city council to say, city council, do you think school committee job is worth 50% of city council job? And they choose to do nothing, because it's a tough thing to talk about, and they'd rather not talk about it. Thank you.
Laura Clancy, 30, 30 seconds.
Thank you. So as a single mom, I should be begging for more money. But seriously, no, I, I didn't get into this job for the money. I got into this job because I love education. I love our school district. I'm very proud of Worcester. And I am very happy with the stipend that we do get.
Tracy O'Connell Novick, 30 seconds.
So I have two thoughts. The first is that I am acutely aware of the fact that most school committees in Massachusetts aren't paid at all. However, I also am acutely aware that decisions we make around public policies like this determine who actually gets to do this. I started on the school committee as a stay-at-home mom, and I was married to the director of a nonprofit. And that was really, really hard. And, you know, whether or not we put money towards things like this, and it's not just this, it's, you know, the State House and that kind of stuff, too, determines who can actually run for these jobs. So if we believe in it, we got to put money behind it.
Thank you. Maureen Benenda, 30 seconds.
Real quick, I do not think that we should ask for an increase in the position, in the pay for school committee. I really think that every bit of money that we get needs to go for the students.
Sue Mailman, rebuttal, 30 seconds.
Just to reiterate, the point is not if we want it. The point is if we have a system that should value the role of a school committee person. And this is going forward, and this is something that is tough to talk about, that I think we should talk about. Thank you.
So question 15 is regarding differentiation. What differentiates you from your fellow candidates? This goes to all of you. We'll start with Sue Mailman.
I don't think you could put 10 people in a room and say, you know, how are we not, we're, we're always going to have things that differentiate us. I think that my business background, I think that my vocational knowledge, I think that my deep community relationships outside of this school system is valuable for this school system going forward. And I think that there's people that are within the school system in all different, you know, we were, if we're older, we had kids that were in a school system, and now, or we're younger and we don't yet have kids. Like Gemma Kamara is a valuable person. She's 30 years old. She's bringing a different perspective to the school committee. I think we should value everybody's differences and, and thoughts on a board like this.
Thank you. Maureen Benenda, one minute.
What makes me unique is I am now beginning my 48 years as an educator. I am the only person on school committee that was a teacher, working on the ground floor with students, moved to be an administrator, assistant principal, principal, and superintendent for six years in Worcester, one year in Quabog, and now in East Hampton. I can say that I individually positively influenced the lives of thousands of students over these 48 years. So just on those three points, I would like to say that, that was, makes me the best candidate.
Thank you. Laura Clancy, one minute.
Thank you. What sets me apart is I'm a, I'm a parent. I have two daughters who are obviously currently in the school district. I'm very active in the schools in the Worcester Public, in the Worcester Public Schools. I'm also an educator. Like I said before, I've worked along with this school district, but not only this school district, I cover about 30 other school districts. So I bring that perspective to the school committee as well. I also think what sets me apart is that I learn from my colleagues, I rely on my colleagues' knowledge, and I work together well with all my colleagues. And I think we're, like Tracy said, this has been one of the best committees to work with, and I value all my colleagues, and I value their input on everything. But like I said, I think me being a current parent and an educator is what sets me apart from everybody else.
Thank you. Tracy O'Connell Novick, one minute.
So the truism of the Tracy's the walk, right? So, yeah, so I do budget and policy in my full-time job. But the reason that I know what I know, I learned in Worcester. I started the Worcester School Committee, and I was a former high school English teacher and a mom. And so what I learned about school finance initially, I learned first serving on the Worcester School Committee. The initial work that I did on policy, I worked on the Worcester School Committee. And now, yeah, I have to stay up on it full-time, because this is what I do for work. I work with school committees all the time. And that's a natural transference. And I will say that I have appreciated the degree to which my colleagues find that valuable, and this administration finds that valuable. It's work that I'd be doing regardless. I, it brings me great joy to be working on a system that means so much to me, and means as much as it does to my family. You know, this spring, my third child will graduate from Worcester Public School. If you'd asked me 30 years ago if that was going to be what we were going to do as a family, I don't know that I would have said yes, but it's been great.
Thank you.
We'll now do closing remarks, beginning with Tracy O'Connell Novick. You have one minute.
Did I come up with something different than what I just said? So, I mean, as has been said a couple of times this evening, I, I think that you're potentially sensing a lot of joy from the incumbents. And that's not always where we are in September of an election year, and it's because this really has been a great term. We've been able to get a lot of things done. I mean, the reason why we can do the full policy review that, you know, Laura's talked about, and some of the other work that, you know, Sue's mentioned, is because we're not sort of putting out fires all the time. And that's because we have a strong administration. That's really, you know, that was actually part of Dr. Monares' interview, is that she wasn't going to be, you know, putting out fires. She was going to make sure they weren't actually getting set. And so continuing that work forward and making sure that there's a strong grounding, a strong governance structure for this administration is really, really important to the Worcester Public Schools. It's really important to the city of Worcester. And I'm also ongoingly conscious that it took us as long as it did to get the Student Opportunity Act passed. We've only got three more years. Got to make sure that you pick good people to be in charge of it. I hope that I'm one of them.
Thank you. Laura Clancy.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and for all the organizations that participated in this forum. My name is Laura Clancy, and I'm serving on my second term on Worcester School Committee, and I am running for one of two at-large seats in November. And ultimately, I'm in this race for the right reason. I'm a parent, I'm an educator, and I'm a voice who likes to build consensus to get things done for our district. And many have said that experience matters, and I could not agree more. I have some of the most experience on this committee. I have kids in the schools. I'm an educator that works in the schools and that is visiting these schools on a daily basis, and no one else can say that. I work very hard on this school committee. I answer to parents, I answer to staffs, and I follow through with administration all the time. And I enjoy what I am doing. And I want to continue that work, and that is why I am running for school committee at large.
Maureen Benenda.
So I myself was a student in the Worcester Public Schools. My daughter also is a graduate of Darty High School. I was very instrumental in the passing of the SOA. I spent a lot of time with four other superintendents down in Boston, working, meeting with Mara Healy, meeting with the Globe, traveling the state, giving the story about why we needed to bring more money to our urban schools. So anyone that knows me will say, I am a lifetime public servant. I have dedicated my life to educating the children of this community, and in that time, I have accumulated a wealth of experiences, from the ground up, began as a teacher to the classroom as superintendent. I will bring that much-needed expertise and experience to this school committee. I will work collaboratively to ensure the success of all our students by meeting their needs and going above that to provide opportunities that will be invaluable to their success as adults.
Sue Mailman.
I first ran in 2021 because I knew, and the community knew, and our business community agreed, that we needed new leadership and new direction for our schools. We've hired a strategic leader in Dr. Monares. She's building a cohesive team. Principals and teachers are excited. We can all work to make Worcester one of the greatest urban school systems in our country. Our job as school committee members is about establishing goals, policies, budget for the district, and advocating for this district. It is not about managing the day-to-day operations of our schools. It is not about managing the day-to-day operations of our schools. My priorities are expanding vocational education, investing in school buildings, building a diverse workforce, and fostering strong community partnerships. My experience and sense of urgency provides the schools a strong voice to support excellence and achievement for all. Please vote for Sue Mailman on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our questions and statements this evening.